Yeah. For sure, for sure. Absolutely. And so, yeah, so what they did was like they, uh, they tore up packets with like all campaign information and put this on their teams and stuff. They went and passed.
So, so you're not forcing me to do this?
No, no, no. We give them to them and it's like, I'm gonna explain you how to do this and then I'm gonna ask you to do this and then you're, you're like, I have one of those. Participation. All right. They said it, it worked really well. They like, they did a survey of the alleys after and once with the secret. Yeah. So local stuff like that.
Okay. And Mike?
Yeah. Clerk, I see ya. Can we call a council meeting to order, please?
Good evening. Caldwell?
Here.
Bowman?
Here.
Laisha?
Here.
Faith?
Here.
Pabon?
Here.
Palashak?
Here.
Brockman?
Here.
Carmichael?
Here.
Adise Mayor?
If we could all rise for the pledge of allegiance and please remain standing.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
If we could please keep in our thoughts and prayers, the family of Suzanne Mary Bowman, mother of our second ward alderman Joshua Bowman, who has recently passed away, as well as all the men and women we have on the street tonight. Thank you. If anybody wishes to address the open forum from the audience, please step forward to the microphone, state your name and address, please. Hearing nobody, alderman?
I'm by, I'm by, I'm by.
Okay.
Luz Chavez, 16th and Ridgeland. Um, I want to thank all the business owners and residents that spoke out online about the pretty harmful legislation, um, liquor ordinance that you're trying to pass. I want to thank all those folks that spoke out online because obviously you heard them, uh, with the scrambling of amendments that you were trying to make to that ordinance over the weekend. Um, to those business owners, owners and residents, I want, um, to say that Mayor Lovero wrote that legislation without considering your voices. And every one of his aldermen, Brockman, Faith, Laisha, Palashak, I skipped right over you. Um, it's obvious you knew about this legislation because you're part of his team. And they didn't consider your voices either. So I want to tell you, your voices do matter. You deserve to be heard and you deserve to be part of the process of developing legislation that keeps our community safe instead of, as in the case of Lovero's legislation, actually brings us more harm. Mayor Lovero, you have a really, really bad pattern of putting forward harmful ordinances. Remember when you tried to shut down open forum and we had this place packed with people speaking out against that? Remember when you tried to pass a no bid contract for 3.8 million with a body cams camera that donated thousands to you? You also had to pull that back that night and return that donation, not because you thought it was wrong to have received it, but because residents said, that's not right. You disregard your constituents and try to do bad things until you're caught. That is the way you govern. And it is not okay. I've asked you this before and I will keep asking you until you change. Why are you so scared of your own constituents? Why can't you bring us into this process of solving issues together as a community? The Berwin Development Corporation receives close to $2 million a year from taxpayers. $2 million a year. It's supposed to support economic development and according to its own mission, develop policies and procedures that all Berwin residents and stakeholders can contribute to and benefit from economic opportunities. So then why isn't the BDC doing its job? If there are safety issues with some businesses and if it's becoming a bigger problem, why isn't the BDC bringing together businesses, community members, and, uh, government officials together to help have conversations and solve issues like this? And let's be very real about safety. It's only a few bars that have had ongoing issues with violence for years and some of those bars donated directly to your campaign, Mayor Lovero. So I'm not surprised you haven't shut them down. I shared your memo for this ordinance on social media and the backlash to it was intense. Business owners are worried that it will kill business for them and send customers running to competitors in nearby towns. They're worried about the cost of necessary equipment and data storage. Residents are worried about security breaches and their data being leaked. Residents are also worried that the legislation like this would open our city to even more lawsuits than it already faces. Now, there's a lot of folks here tonight and I don't know if you folks know that the police in Berwin get sued more than any other police department nearby. There are tons of civil rights legislation, uh, lawsuits against this city and that you have been personally involved in, uh, and the city has personally involved in. It, this town has spent, this taxpayers, not taxpayers, have spent millions over the years in paying settlements, uh, for civil rights lawsuits that brought against this city and especially the police. So I don't know why you think adding more surveillance and giving BPD more access to our data makes us safer. I don't understand how you could even see that the world that we're living in right now, where in Berwin, a citizen walking down Saramac, picking up a pizza, was detained by ICE, where part of the rapid response team and in Berwin and in Cicero, folks keep getting detained by ICE. And you wrote a piece of legislation asking every business with a, with a license or with a liquor, uh, license that makes up 140 businesses in Berwin, you wrote a piece of legislation saying, every customer must have their ID scanned. What do you think an undocumented person is gonna show? Over 60% of Berwin is Latino. What do you think someone who's not a citizen is going to show? And then they're gonna have that data stored and how do you know it's gonna be secure? How do you know it's not gonna be leaked? How are you protecting immigrants in Berwin? Because I haven't seen you do anything except promote one or two, uh, Know Your Rights virtual sessions, but you come out with a piece of legislation like that. It's ridiculous, it's out of touch, it's extremely vaguely written, which in and of itself is extremely dangerous to have such a vaguely, uh, written and poorly written piece of legislation. You did it on your own, you didn't ask for input from business, uh, folks, you didn't, who freaked out then online when they heard about it. You didn't ask for input from residents, you didn't bring our community together to try to solve a problem. You tried to do it on your own in a really irresponsible, incompetent way, and that is not how a real leader acts. That's how a dictator. We need you to stop acting like a dictator, to stop coming up with ordinances that we wouldn't even see in a dystopian TV show. You need to do better, you need to, again, not fear the people you're supposed to serve. You're supposed to serve business owners, you're supposed to serve residents. You work for us. And so why are you keep trying to pull over on us these, the crappiest legislation that you could write? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience for open forum? Xavier?
Hello, everyone. My name is Xavier Barahas. Um, I'm a first ward resident and outreach ambassador for the city of Berwin. I am here today to remind the community that the Care, uh, the Caring Together, Living Better Together event will occur at the YMCA on Friday, September 12th, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This event will provide a wide variety of information and resources valuable to all residents, especially for the older adult community and caregivers. So, please join us on September 12th and make sure to check our the city of Berwin calendar for more information. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Hi, Stephanie Nance, seventh ward. Um, I'm here this evening to speak on the proposed ordinance for video surveillance and ID scanning at Berwin businesses serving alcohol. We're all troubled by what happened at Junior's and other incidents and other establishments in the past, and we all want to find the best way to keep our neighbors and small businesses safer. But a rushed action without input from our neighbors and from small businesses here that would be impacted, isn't the answer. Sometimes a quick action doesn't make it the right one. And thought and input are needed to craft the best solution. Many of us have concerns about how this ordinance could negatively impact small businesses in our community as well. As written, the cost of the cameras and scanners would be with the responsibility of the business. That is a lot to ask of our businesses in this economy, but it's beyond just that initial cost. Either a service would have to be purchased for managing the data and securing the data, um, for both the scanners and the video, or the business would have to manage that themselves, which they're not trained to do, nor do they have IT staff to do it. In addition to the direct costs of this, what about the concerns of lost revenue? When people stop patronizing Berwin establishments due to concerns about their surveillance and their data privacy, has anyone done any polling or outreach to find out if we could impact the profits of these businesses as well? And who is overseeing the security of that data? Will the access to that data be audited so that we know who has been accessing it, who is handling those audits? There are liability concerns of how the data is managed, and that could be a negative impact to the business and the city as well with more lawsuits for both. How can we minimize that risk and the risk that could fall into the wrong hands? And those wrong hands can be federal immigration agents as well. Just this week, we saw what's happening in DC and in the same breath, Trump called out Chicago at the Target. And we all know that that didn't mean the city proper. We're at risk as well. As they're confiscating and using more data to ramp up, how can we keep this kind of data out of their hands? It may be better right here then to make sure that data isn't readily available to Target at all. But ultimately, what will this actually do to curb the violence and help us all feel safer? Video surveillance and ID scans are just recording who was there and what did happen. It doesn't help prevent incidents from happening. It puts undue burden on our local businesses that have, that haven't even been struggling with the same type of issues while not holding accountable those businesses that are having those incidents. As a resident, as a patron of the small businesses here in Berwin, I ask that you vote no on this and that we work together to find a better way to help promote the safety in our local businesses and in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience for open forum?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Yes, alderman, open forum.
I appreciate all, everyone's comments that are, and everyone that's coming here to speak their mind and everybody has an L issue. Um, democracy is working right now. Um, the mayor wants public safety, as do all of us, okay? Um, this is started communication, uh, and everyone has and is now getting input. Doesn't mean that by having this communication come, doesn't mean it's gonna be passed tonight. Essentially what is going on is democracy. It's doing its job. You guys are giving your voices here, we brought our voices up, okay? This goes throughout the state, goes throughout the county, goes throughout our nation. There has to be something done. The mayor started, just posted a flag, just real line right now, communication started. I appreciate, I really truly appreciate everyone's feedback, I really do. And Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you starting this.
Thank you. Any alderman for open forum? Anything else? All right, hearing none, item C1, please.
Uh, the clerk's department did receive correspondence communication in regards to today's ordinances. A hard copy has been disseminated to the mayor and council for their review. Thank you. Item, line, um, E1?
C1.
Oh, C1. C1 of the minutes from the committee of the whole and the regular city council meeting minutes from July 22nd, 2025.
Uh, be my motion to approve the regular city council meeting minutes and the committee of the whole minutes of July 22nd, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Caldwell, to accept the minutes for the regular meeting of 20, July 22nd, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Caldwell, to accept the BDC Director, Halsberg, a request for proposal, RFP, for redevelopment of 6609 to 6639 Stanley Avenue, Berwin, Illinois. David, do you have anything you want to add?
Uh, no, you have a memo from me, um, just reviewing the history of this. This item has come before you through the committee of the whole for your input as well as others' input, and we would ask for concurrence on this, uh, to approve it tonight to, we can get it out on the streets.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I motion to approve, request for proposal for the redevelopment of 6609 to 6639 Stanley Avenue, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Bowman, seconded by Faith, to accept the Berwin Development Corporation, uh, RFP for the redevelopment of 6609 to 6639 Stanley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E1, please.
Item E1 is a communication from BDC Director, Halsberg, a request for proposal, RFP, for redevelopment of 6609 to 6639 Stanley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item E2, please.
E2 is BDC's quarterly report for the second quarter of 2025. This is informational.
Motion to accept is informational.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Carmichael, to accept is informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item F1, please.
Item F1 is the appointment and swearing in of Salina Villa to the Berwin Emergency Telephone System Board to fill the opening for a three-year term effective immediately.
I move that we concur with Mayor Lovero's appointment and swearing in of Salina Villa to the Berwin Emergency Telephone System Board to fill the opening for a three-year term effective immediately and thank departing Cynthia Hayes for her commitment and unwavering dedication to the city of Berwin.
Second.
Motion by Laisha, seconded by Pabon, to concur with the appointment of Salina Villa to the ETSB Board, the 911 Board, to fill the vacancies left by Cynthia Hayes and thank Cynthia Hayes for her commitment and wavering dedication to that system. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ms. Villa?
To you, Salina Villa, having been appointed to the 911 Emergency Telephone System Board in the city of Berwin, in the county of Cook, of Forsyth, do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your newly appointed position to the best of your availability. I do. Congratulations.
Keep it. All right. Congratulations. Alderman Plachek, you have a motion?
Motion, yes, Mayor. Motion to bring forward J1.
Second.
Motion by Plachek, seconded by Carmichael, to bring forward J1. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J1, please.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to eye the recommendation of the Fire Chief Colignio in honoring the 21 members of the Berwin Fire Department for their exceptional response to the explosion at the BP gas station at 6749 Ogden Avenue, Berwin, on July 24th, 2025. You guys did a hell of a job. I know there's a lot of skill, precision, and luck. You guys, I appreciate it from one brother to another, sisters and all, but thank you very much for all the hard work.
Got a second?
Uh, did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Plachek, seconded by Pabon, to congratulate the 21 members of the Berwin Fire Department for the exceptional response to the BP explosion at the gas station at 6749 Ogden Avenue, Berwin, on July 24th, 2025. You guys did a hell of a job. I know there's a lot of skill, precision, and luck. You guys, I appreciate it from one brother to another, sisters and all, but thank you very much for all the hard work.
Got a second?
Uh, did somebody second that?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Plachek, seconded by Pabon, to congratulate the 21 members of the Berwin Fire Department for the exceptional response to the BP explosion at the gas station 6749 on July 24th, 2025. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chief Caniglio, you have some words?
I do. I, I got a short statement I'd like to make.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor and members of city council, I stand for you today to formally recognize and commend the extraordinary bravery and service demonstrated by the firefighters who responded to the emergency at the BP gas station on Ogden Avenue in Berwin on July 24th, 2025. What began as a call for a high voltage power line arcing on the ground, brought down by a passing storm, quickly escalated into a major incident. The incident, the initial responding company acted swiftly, contacting ComEd, evacuating civilians, and securing the gasoline pumps. Their quick action, uh, set the tone for what would become a five-hour-long battle to protect lives and property. Just 12 minutes into the incident, the power line ruptured and ignited an underground gas line, sending flames throughout the alley. Moments later, a second gas line ignited a nearby business located about a block east of the gas station, and then just 14 minutes after that, a massive explosion leveled the BP gas station. Incredibly, and thanks to the decisive actions of these crews, no one was injured. Firefighters held their ground, keeping the fire contained, protecting surrounding structures, and allowing the gas to burn off safely. Throughout it all, they constantly monitored nearby buildings, and in one case, they discovered natural gas levels nearing explosive limits inside the restaurant that was located next to the gas station. Firefighters quickly ventilated the structure and likely prevented a second catastrophic explosion. While the explosion was unfolding, we received 28 weather-related calls throughout the city of Berwin. One engine company and one ambulance company handled the majority of them. Their ability to prioritize, respond swiftly, helped keep our community safe during a highly chaotic period. That kind of dedication does not go unnoticed. To those members of the department who responded that day, we thank you. Your actions exemplify the very best of what it means to be a Berwin firefighter. As you hear your name, please step forward to receive your award. Mr. Mayor? Incident Command Battalion Chief Michael Lyons demonstrated exceptional leadership by coordinating with ComEd, NICOR, as the conditions escalated, with, while also managing alarm upgrade and directing incoming units with critical fireground assignments. His strategic coordination laid the foundation for a safe and effective response to an extremely volatile and evolving incident. Command Team Division Chief Robert Pilch played a vital role in managing fireground communications, coordinating closely with Incident Command. He ensured critical information was relayed efficiently between dispatch and command, supporting strategic decisions and maintaining operational clarity throughout the entire incident. Safety Officer Division Chief Scott Wazak maintained overall scene safety throughout the duration of the incident, ensuring a secure environment for all operating personnel. He provided key situational updates to command that directed, directly influenced fireground strategy. He also served as lead investigator, coordinating closely with NICOR and ComEd during the post-in-incident analysis. Scott, are you here?
I see Scott.
Engine 902, Lieutenant Brendan O'Brien, Engineer Timothy Burwick, firefighter Ryan Denson. They were the first responding company that took immediate action to contact ComEd, evacuated the gas station, evac, activated the emergency fuel shut-off on all gasoline pumps, and secured the area. They contained the initial gas main fires along with monitoring and ventilating nearby structures, preventing secondary explosions. Lieutenant O'Brien, Engineer Tim Burwick, and firefighter Ryan Denson. Engine 903, Lieutenant Fred Bazadua, Engineer Jason Walker, firefighter Roger Connolly. They were the second engine company in that deployed multiple exposure lines to help keep the initial gas main fires in check. Despite being positioned closest to the explosion, that crew remained steadfast in their efforts and to contain the fire until NICOR was able to shut the gas down to the area. Lieutenant Fred Bazadua, Engineer Jason Walker, and firefighter Roger Connolly. Spencer Hill, firefighter James Hernandez, and firefighter Thomas Monarano. They assisted 903 with hose deployment and played a key role in maintaining suppression efforts. Throughout the extended operation, they consistently rotated operating hose lines to keep the gas main fires in check until NICOR was able to kill the gas to the area. Please come forward, Acting Lieutenant Dan Simic, Engineer Adrian Contreras, Spencer Hill, and firefighter James Hernandez, firefighter Thomas Monarano. Ambulance 906, firefighter paramedic Tom Schlessinger and firefighter paramedic Michael Jacobs. They provided EMS support throughout the entire incident, ensuring safety for the well-being of personnel on the scene. In addition to their medical duties, they assisted in deploying exposure lines and rotated in on nozzle operations, helping to control the persistent gas main fires during the extended response. Firefighter paramedic Thomas Schlessinger, firefighter paramedic Michael Jacobs. Engine, engine company 901 and ambulance 905, Lieutenant Derek Majeris, Acting Engineer Joseph Jepetta, firefighter Lorraine Seneca, firefighter Fabiola Amisqua, and firefighter paramedic Tom Gyros. These two companies handled a high volume of weather-related and EMS emergencies across the city of Berwin during the BP incident. While fire resources were committed to the explosion scene... the BP incident. While fire resources were committed to the explosion scene, their efforts ensured the continued safety of the community by responding swiftly and effectively to all calls throughout the entire city. Please come forward, I believe Fabiola and firefighter paramedic Tom Gyros is here. No? Oh, Lorraine. Lorraine, I didn't know you were gonna be here.
Lorraine came in injured.
Alright, thank you. Congratulations to all of you.
Aye.
Aye, ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F three, please.
Item F three is an ordinance amending chapter fourteen ninety of the Codified Ordinances of Berwyn to transfer authority for rodent abatement from the Board of Health to the building director and to require annual rodent abatement contracts for certain multi-residential buildings.
It'd be my motion to approve the ordinance amending chapter fourteen ninety of the Codified Ordinances of Berwyn to transfer authority for rodent abatement from the Board of Health to the building director and to require annual rodent abatement contracts for certain multi-residential buildings. Authorize the corporate authorities signatures on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Pabon, seconded by Carmichael, to adopt the ordinance amending chapter fourteen ninety of the transfer authority for the rodent abatement to the building director and require annual rodent abatement contracts for certain multi-residential buildings, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palacek?
Aye.
Bruckman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Aye, ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item F four, please.
Item F four is an ordinance amending chapter eight zero four, section eight zero four point zero three Alcohol Liquor License Applications and chapter eight zero four, section eight oh four point eighteen, view of premises of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Berwyn, Cook County, Illinois.
Mayor, it'll be my motion to defer and refer this to the Committee the whole on August twenty-sixth for further discussion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Motion by Faith, seconded by Leja, to defer to August twenty-sixth and refer to the Committee the whole on August twenty-sixth. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G one, please.
Item G one is a personal special recognition from the city of Berwyn, recognizing Sandy Anderson for her years of devoted service to the city of Berwyn and congratulate her on her retirement. Sandy, thank you for all the knowledge and patience you've had with me and the department. Words can't express how grateful I am. Here is the proclamation. The proclamation reads, Sandy Anderson was born in Fort Thomas, Kentucky, to a white-collar railroad father and a stay-at-home mom. She spent her elementary years in Fairvax, Virginia, just outside of the nation's capital, where she dreamed of becoming an FBI agent. Her family briefly relocated to the Bay Area of San Francisco in the late sixties before settling in the Chicagoland area, whereas Sandy began her journey with the city of Berwyn in two thousand twelve, working as a parking enforcer, where she quickly made herself known, not just by name, but by voice. You always know when Sandy is in the building. Each day, she brought energy, laughter, and a touch of mischief to every office she entered. And whereas Sandy transitioned to the role of the deputy city clerk in two thousand fourteen, working alongside city clerks Thomas Pavlik, Margaret Paul, and now our very own Letty Garcia, offering assistance with razor-sharp wit, infectious smile, and a one-liner that could brighten or shake up any room. And whereas Sandy has spent the last eleven years at City Hall, doing everything from coordinating block parties, juggling foyer requests, helping residents secure handicap parking, and handling an avalanche of daily interdepartment tunnel madness, all while making it look easy and sound hilarious. And whereas Sandy's heart belongs to her family, her three brothers and their families, her remarkable children, Kelly and Cassie, and her own even more amazing grandchildren, Hunter, Meredith, Mackenzie, Claire, and Caroline, who have all inherited her sense of humor. Now therefore, let it be all known, all far and wide, all the way from Berwyn to Dollywood and to Turkey, where her favorite soap operas are made, that Sandy Anderson is hereby honored for her incredible service, her unmatched energy, personality, and her unforgettable presence at City Hall. She may be retiring from the city of Berwyn, but she knows she'll never retire from being loud, lovable, and one hundred percent Sandy. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed, Mayor Jay Lovero, Clerk Letty Garcia, and the city of Berwyn council members would like to recognize Sandy Anderson for her years of devoted service to the city of Berwyn and congratulate her on her retirement.
Do I have a motion?
It'd be my motion to adopt the proclamation and thank Sandy for her many years of work here at the city and authorize the corporate authorities to fix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Palacek, to adopt the proclamation. Thanks Sandy for all her marvelous years here at the city of Berwyn, affix the necessary signatures, and place it on its way to passage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I would ask Marge Paul and Letty Garcia to please present this proclamation to Sandy.
Speech. I just wanna say, it's been my honor since two thousand and eleven to work in this building. It's really hard. Tomorrow will be one week since I haven't been here, but I still get up every morning thinking I gotta shower and get ready.
Congratulations, Sandy.
Thank you, Sandy.
Item G two, please.
Item G two is appointment and swearing-in of Matthew Medina as the new deputy city clerk.
It'd be my motion to approve the appointment swearing-in of Matthew Medina as the deputy city clerk.
Second.
Motion by Faith, seconded by Pabon, to officially appoint Matthew Medina to the position of deputy city clerk and swear him in. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Matthew?
Raise your right hand. To you, Matthew Medina, having been appointed to the deputy city clerk in the city of Berwyn, in the county of Cook, of course, I do solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of your newly appointed position to the best of your ability. Congratulations.
Matthew's family? Congratulations, Matthew. Item G three, please.
Item G three is a handicap parking sign determination. Twelve twenty-six Home Avenue, approve.
It'd be my motion to concur with the clerk's approval of a handicap parking spot at twelve twenty-six Home Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, seconded by Pabon, to approve the handicap spot at twelve twenty-six Home Avenue. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item G four, please.
Item G four is the handicap parking sign determinations for sixteen seventeen East Avenue, deny. Eighteen forty-two Maple Avenue, deny.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to pull sixteen seventeen East Avenue and defer it for next city council meeting.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to pull sixteen seventeen East Avenue from the communication and defer it for two weeks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Do we have a motion on eighteen forty-two Maple?
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to agree with the recommendation of the clerk's office to deny the handicap parking sign at eighteen forty-two Maple.
Second.
Motion by Bruckman, seconded by Carmichael, to agree with the clerk and approve the denial at the eighteen forty-two South Maple for the handicap spot. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item I one, please.
Item one is a communication from alderman Leja, the proclamation recognizing Richard Rick Frank Toman with a sign to be installed on the southeast corner of Twenty-seventh Street and Clinton Avenue, reading Toman Trails in honor of Rick Toman's exemplaryness.
I move that we adopt this proclamation recognizing Rick Toman with a sign to be installed on the southeast corner of Twenty-seventh Street and Clinton Avenue, reading Toman Trails in honor of Rick Toman's exemplaryness, and he having been the longest sitting alderman in the Berwyn history, authorize the corporate authorities to affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Palacek, to adopt the proclamation recognizing Rick Frank Toman and install the sign at the Twenty-seventh and Clinton corner, Toman Trails, and thank him for all his service to the city of Berwyn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Toman, would you like to please come up and accept the proclamation? Thank you, Sandy. We know who the real power was behind Rick.
I will read the proclamation. Whereas Rick Frank Toman has been a lifelong Berwyn resident and has always been interested in serving Berwyn and its residents, and whereas he spent his early Berwyn life as a boy scout, attending Irving Grammar School, where he learned to play the trumpet, and took that skill to Morton East High School to play in the senior band. And whereas, in October of nineteen fifty-six, Rick joined the Air Force, spending time in different cities around the world, but coming back to his beloved Berwyn in nineteen sixty after his service. And whereas, shortly after his return, he became deputy township collector, serving residents who in those days would stand in long lines, sometimes for hours, to pay their taxes in cash. And whereas, Rick was instrumental in working with the Hobie Day Parade for fifty years in Berwyn. And whereas, Rick ran for and won Third Ward Alderman in nineteen seventy-three, and successfully kept that position for over twenty-six years, making him the longest sitting alderman in Berwyn history. And whereas, after Rick's time as alderman, he served Berwyn as the Health Department Inspector, Blight Inspector, Community Development Block Grants Inspector, and spent twelve years as a fire and police commissioner. And whereas, the highest praise that can be said of anyone is that they left our world better. Rick Toman has left our world vastly better. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed that I, Mayor Robert J Lovero, and Third Ward Alderman Richard E. Leja, and the city of Berwyn council members would like to recognize Richard Rick Frank Toman for his lifelong service to the city of Berwyn, our community, and his impact on the Third Ward of Berwyn. Furthermore, let it be proclaimed that a sign will be installed on the southeast corner of Twenty-seventh and Clinton Avenue, reading Toman Trails in honor of Rick Toman's exemplaryness, entered upon the records of the city of Berwyn this twelfth day of August, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you, Alderman. Item I two, please.
I two is a communication from alderman Leja regarding the Summer Fest at the Depot District, the youth open mic, and block party in the Third Ward recap for informational purposes.
I move that we accept the Summer Fest at the Depot District communication, block party in the Third Ward recap as informational, and thank everyone who was involved.
Second.
Motion by Leja, seconded by Faith, to accept the communication as informational, and thank everybody who was involved with the successful Summer Fest. Thank you. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J two, please.
Item J two is a communication from Police Chief Samaglia, granting permission and authorization for the procession of the annual Blessed Miguel Profounders the five K fun run on October eighteen, two thousand twenty-five.
I move to grant permission and authorization for the procession of the annual Blessed Miguel Profounders five K fun run on October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Caldwell, seconded by Bowman, to concur with Chief Samaglia and grant the permission for the five K fun run at Saint Leonard's on?
October eighteenth.
October eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J three, please.
Item J three is a communication from Public Works Director Marshon, a recommendation to approve the purchase of a Public Works Command vehicle, two thousand twenty-five Chevy Tahoe, VIN number one GN S six N R D eight SR three six seven two seven five, in the amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve the Public Works Director's John Marshon's recommendation for the purchase of the Public Works Command vehicle, two thousand twenty-five Chevy Tahoe, VIN number one GN S six N R D eight S. You want to go through all this?
No.
Okay. The purchase amount of sixty-six thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Director Marshon, allowing him to purchase the two thousand twenty-five Chevy Tahoe for sixty-six thousand two hundred and forty-one dollars from Taska Chevrolet and Wheeling. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palacek?
Aye.
Bruckman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Aye, ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J four, please.
Item J four is a communication from Senior Engineer Campbell, approval of pay estimate number five and final, two thousand twenty-four motor fuel tax, MFT, street resurfacing program to Lindell Brothers, Inc., in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve on the approval and recommendation on our engineer Campbell for the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and zero cents for resurfacing program to the Lindell Brothers Company.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Senior Engineer Nicole Campbell and approve pay estimate number five in the amount of forty thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars for the street resurfacing to Lindell Brothers. All those in favor on the call or roll.
Caldwell?
Aye.
Bowman?
Aye.
Leja?
Aye.
Faith?
Aye.
Pabon?
Aye.
Palacek?
Aye.
Bruckman?
Aye.
Carmichael?
Aye.
Aye, ayes, Mayor.
Motion carried. Item J five, please.
Item J five is a communication from Senior Engineer Campbell, approval of pay estimate number one and number two, partial for the four million four M gallon ground storage tank construction project to Arrow Valdivia Contractors in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. This payment includes a ten percent retainage.
This payment includes a ten percent retainage. This payment should be processed from ARPA funds.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve on the recommendation of our engineer Campbell for the pay estimate of one and two, partial of four million gallon ground storage tank construction project to Ara Valvia Contractors in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand. This payment includes a ten percent retainage. This payment should be processed through the ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Senior Engineer Nicole Campbell, and approve pay estimate number one and two for the four million gallon ground storage tank construction in the amount of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars to Ara Valdivia Contractors. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palacek.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aide eyes mayor.
Motion carried. Item J six, please.
Item J six is a communication from Senior Engineer Campbell, approval of pay estimate number five for the Ogden Avenue Water Main and Sewer Project to try and construction in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. This payment includes a ten percent retainage. This payment should be processed from the ARPA fund.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve on the recommendations of our engineer to pay the estimate of number five to the Ogden Avenue Water Main Sewer Project to try and construction in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. This payment includes a ten percent retainage. This payment should be processed through the ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Senior Engineer Campbell, and approve payment estimate number five for the Ogden Avenue Water Main and Sewer Project in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents to try and construction to be paid from ARPA funds. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palacek.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aide eyes mayor.
Motion carried. Item J seven, please.
Item J seven is a communication from Senior Engineer Campbell, approval of pay estimate number one, two thousand twenty-five motor fuel tax, MFT, street resurfacing program to Lindell Brothers, Inc., in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents. This payment includes a ten percent retainage.
Mr. Mayor, it's my motion to approve on the recommendation of our engineer Campbell on pay estimate one for the two thousand twenty-five motor fuel tax, MFT, street resurfacing program to the Lindon Brothers, whatever, in the amount of five hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars and ten cents. This payment includes a ten percent retainage. 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 This payment should be processed through the ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion by Palacek, seconded by Pabon, to concur with Senior Engineer Campbell, and approve the payment estimate number five for the Ogden Avenue Water Main and Sewer Project in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palacek.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aide eyes mayor.
Motion carried. Item J eight, please.
Item J is a communication from city staff, city admin, Green, IT Director Frank, FS Director Martin, recommendation to waive the bidding process and enter into a new SAS agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars annually.
It would be my motion, it would be my motion, Mayor, to concur with Director Green, Frank, and Martin, and into a contract with Tyler Technologies in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars, have the corporate authorities affix the necessary signatures and place it on its way to passage.
Second.
Motion by Fait, seconded by Bowman, to concur with Administrator Green, Director Frank, and Director Martin, waive the bidding process and enter into a new SAS agreement with Tyler Technologies in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars annually, which is an upgrade to our current system. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palacek.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aide eyes mayor.
Motion carried. Alderman Brockman, do you have a motion?
Yes, I move to refer items J nine through J thirteen to the Building and Zoning Committee and defer it for two weeks to the next council meeting.
Second.
Who's seconded? Motion by Brockman, seconded by Carmichael, to defer items J nine through J thirteen to the next council meeting and refer to the Building and Zoning Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Item J fourteen, please.
Item J fourteen is a communication from Facilities Manager Fox, recommendation to approve light fixture repair and replacement at the Berwyn Parking Garage, thirty-three thirty-two Grove Avenue, by Alpha Construction for a quoted total of ten thousand and eight hundred dollars.
I move to accept the recommendation by Facilities Manager Fox and approve the repair estimate in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars with Alpha Construction for the light fixture repair and replacement at the Berwyn Parking Garage located at three 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 two Grove Avenue.
Second.
Motion by Bowman, seconded by Palacek, to concur with Facilities Director Fox, and approve the ten thousand eight hundred dollars to Alpha Construction for the repair of fifteen light fixtures in the parking garage on Grove Avenue. All those in favor, on the call of the roll.
Caldwell.
Aye.
Bowman.
Aye.
Leja.
Aye.
Fait.
Aye.
Pabon.
Aye.
Palacek.
Aye.
Brockman.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Aide eyes mayor.
Motion carried. J fifteen, please.
J fifteen is a communication from City Communications Director Ayala regarding external partnership policy guide, a guide for nonprofits, agencies, and community groups interested in working with the city of Berwyn pamphlet for informational purposes.
It would be my motion to accept this communication from Director Ayala as informational.
Second.
Motion by Carmichael, seconded by Pabon, to accept the communication from Director Ayala as informational. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. The consent agenda?
Accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Fait, seconded by Leja, to accept the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Alderman Caldwell, Aldermanic meetings.
Call the chair.
Alderman Bowman.
A quick note to say thank you to the Berwyn community and the staff here, and their well wishes and support during a very difficult time for my family.